Call to order the meeting of Tuesday, May 29th. If both city clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of May 14th and a special meeting of May 16th. Do I have a motion to receive and file them?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have three public hearings tonight. They are all relative to GMT Brick Manufacturing Company at 2620th Street. So if council has no objections, we will do all three public hearings together. And I'll have the clerk read them.
Number one is to hear comments on the application of GMT Brick Manufacturing Company located at 2620th Street for an industrial exemptions, industrial facilities exemption certificate for personal property for new machinery and equipment. The second public hearing is for the same company to transfer the remaining three years of their industrial facilities exemption certificate number 2007-574 for personal property from another local unit of government to the city. And the third public hearing is to hear on the application of the same company to transfer the remaining five years of their industrial facilities exemption certificate number 2010-100 for personal property from another local unit of government to the city. Following the public hearings, council will give consideration to resolutions to approve these applications.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council relative to these public hearings?
My name is Joe McCullough with the Sinclair County Economic Development Alliance. Also here is Mark Ward, President of Brick Manufacturing. We have a short presentation that he would like to give to talk about, a brief overview of his company and why the investments are important.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Mark Ward, Brick Manufacturing, President of Brick Manufacturing, founder, started the company in 1987, started in the industrial park originally. Kind of heard you guys are behind this, so. Okay. I sold the company in about seven years ago to a company called The Green Group. It's a father-daughter run enterprise that's been in the family since 1904. I was looking for investors, found these guys as being great, great partners, and ended up buying me completely out. It's a very complex business. What we do is metal injection molding, so we produce metal parts by the plastic injection molding process. Some of it, I'll show you more about it, but they're, they have three facilities, ours being in the Port Huron area, then Warren, Pennsylvania, and Oceanside, California. They, the corporate headquarters is in Oceanside, California. So I started it in 1986. I was born and raised in Port Huron. Had Mr. Rep. for my gym teacher, by the way.
(laughing).
Think everybody did.
(laughing). So what we do is powder injection molding. It's a combination of metal injection molding and ceramic. We take a powder or a metal ceramic and mix it with a plastic polymer, creating a binder that's similar to a plastic, it'll flow through a plastic injection molding machine, making a complex shape that has 80 to 90 percent of the compound is metal. We put it into a furnace and burn off the plastic and then melt the powder metal together, creating a solid dense metal part. Automotive is one of the applications, but we're, 80 percent of our business is medical and probably another 18 percent of it's firearms and very small amount of automotive. So I've tried to, I started out my career in the automotive business and tried to stay away from it once we got into this new venture. We are ISO 9000 and 13485 is the medical designation, so we have our own in-house mold building capabilities. The Greens have supported us, that's the, it's the Green family, that's what the GMT is, Green Manufacturing Technologies. Britt is my daughter's name, that's where the Brittany come, Britt comes from, Brittany is my daughter's name. So we started out as a small company and we've grown quite a bit since I sold it five years ago. It's a very expensive business to, since 2004, they've invested almost over $2 million. That's not including the facility that we're revamping on 20th Street right now. We're getting ready to move into it in a couple of weeks. It's almost, almost completed, so. So they've been very good support, the Green Groups, Greens have been very good support. I told them that I wasn't moving to California, which sometimes I wish I would have done that, maybe, I'm not sure. But I told them I had to stay here and they, so they've supported us and this, this new facility really shows the support and they are committed to keeping us here. What we do is such a complicated process that it's, we're, we're a little bit different than most companies. We have general labor is a lot lower percentage for us and technical labor is much higher, so we have a few more, a lot more percentage higher paying jobs, so, being in the business that we're in. This kind of shows a little bit of the technical. This is one of the tool design, showing this is a part for Arthro Care, that's happens to be, I forgot to take the Arthro Care off the presentation, but it's one of their ceramic components that, that does knee surgery. It's a, it's a tissue ablation and the ceramic isolates the, the electrical conductivity to prevent the patient from getting burnt. So this just kind of shows a little bit more of the complexity of the tooling that we're Metallurgy is what we do, so this kind of shows that we look at the microstructure and we have four or five lab people that are, that are technically capable of looking at metallurgical microstructure and understanding what it is that we're doing so that we know what, whether or not the parts are produced correctly or not. Lots of inspection equipment, that's all video inspection type equipment. We have about 12 different people that are, that are highly skilled in dimensional metrology, dimensional checking of components. So one of our largest customers is Intuitive Surgical. They make the robot that the Port Huron Hospital just bought for surgery and that's one of the instruments in the lower left-hand corner, the IS is Intuitive Surgical. And that's a, we make 17 parts, we make 90 percent of the parts that are the end effects that actually touch the patient, so it's kind of a, kind of a neat thing, they're proud of, we're their largest MIM supplier. There's some other, so this kind of gives you an idea, the penny shows you the size of the components that we're making, they're very, very tiny, complex geometries. So in the first year, we expect to generate at least 15 to 20. I'm always pretty conservative, I always, I always hit everything that we say we're going to. We're actually ahead of our projections for when I sold the company five years by three times, we've three times, we've grown three times larger than we expected to at this point, so. I'm usually pretty conservative when it comes to that, so we should be 20 to 30 in the second year and then it could go significant from there. We're ready to get back into the automotive world and that could take us to where we could just grow significantly faster than we have already, so. But the California owners have been committed to keeping the operation in Port Huron and this is, this is part of what helps me to convince them to stay here, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on council has any questions for Mr. Ward? Guess that's it, but thank you very much for keeping your business in Port Huron.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adopt the three resolutions?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
I request that they be done separately.
Sure, not a problem. We'll do number one, which is approving the application. Did you want to still support that one, Councilmember Harris? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I completely support this company coming into town and doing everything. One thing I have, I looked at the certificate on page two and it says about zero retained, it talks about 98 new jobs, but it says zero retained. Does anybody understand that certificate, why it would put zero retained down there?
Okay. You can come to the podium if you would.
We put zero retained jobs just because it is a company moving from Port Huron Township into, into Port Huron, so technically speaking, I mean, it is, it is about, I think it was like 70, 80 new jobs, but Mark came up and gave a presentation. You could technically call it retained jobs in the county, you know, being that California is supporting them here, and he's actually gone above and beyond to say it's 20, 20 to 30 new jobs in the first year and 20 to 30 jobs in the second year, so when we start adding the numbers up, they're, they're growing significantly. Does that help explain your question?
Yes, it does, and we need the jobs, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
All.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Number two.
So moved.
Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald, discussion. Take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Number three.
So moved.
Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, discussion. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. That concludes public hearings. We'll move on to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, you have four minutes and if you please give us your name.
Good evening, Mayor. James Ralcon, 38, 48, Jack Pine Lane, Port Huron. Here this evening just to give you a brief overview of the success of our first Port Huron Cemetery's Honoring and Heritage Clean Suite project, which was held on May 5th and 6th. I want to start out by thanking the mayor for her support on this entire project and Bruce Brown for your support and more importantly, the people that often are not given enough credit to make things happen, Tim Hickey, just phenomenal, and his staff at Lakeside Cemetery. Sue Child for her guidance on the project, Pat Kingsbury in the mayor's office, and Bob Ike, right there helping in this, this project to make it happen. I would first of all, again, want to just go over some people I want to thank this evening. Certainly John and Ann Kendrick with the Pollock Randall Marysville Funeral Homes and Kara Simpson Funeral Home for providing the advertising and marketing support to make the project happen. I'd like to then highlight a number of the groups that are involved, and I think I'll be within my timeline, Mayor, and I'll try to be specific as to what those groups did. The Blue Water Parrot Head Club had a party. No, no, they, they, they worked very hard, Steve Padgett. The Port Huron Robotics Club from the Harrison Center, approximately 20 young people did a wonderful job working at Lakeside. WGRT Radio for their ongoing support. Attorney John Adair. Special thanks to Kurt Weston, the Sinclair County Road Commission, after a phone call and some support from Bruce and others at City Hall. Craft Road was cleaned up along Grashett Avenue on the south side right up past Northern High School. Years of debris and garbage along Craft Road was all cleaned up as part of the project. Thanks to Moran Motors, Marcia Haynes, Art and Mike Smith with Smith Family Funeral Home for some funding for some additional landscaping. Ryan Rostoni and a whole team of volunteers that did some landscaping in front of Lakeside Cemetery at the corner of Grashett and Holland Avenue. Port City Communications, the Council on Aging, the Quanis Club, By Design, the Times Herald, Radio First, Saint Clair County Allied Veterans Council, Ray Carrier, Mary Lou and Brett Andrews for their work in doing some landscaping outside the chapel, Crown Financial Ministries, the United States Navy, Roth Painting Service for the exterior painting of the chapel, MC Shine Cleaning Company for their cleaning of both the chapel at Lakeside and Mount Hope, Quality Time Recreation, so I could have a golf cart to ride around that weekend, which is a lot of fun. Port Huron Paint for donation of paint for the chapel, May Wilbert Vault Works for tent donation, Grace Life Baptist Church for their work over Allied Veterans. Tremendous job by Silent Keepers, a private company that donated their services to take on the challenge of cleaning up the baby cemetery and did a phenomenal job. Boy Scout Troop 104 from the United Methodist Church, Saint Clair County, Michigan Labor Council, AFVL CIO, Central Labor Council, thanks Ken for your donation of financial support for water. The American Red Cross Amateur Radio Club for Communications, the Salvation Army for food service, Tim Hortons for food service, Jordan Fondero who redid Soldier Cemetery and looks beautiful, Chef Shell's Catering for support and food service at Allied Veterans, the city of Port Huron again, also Ron Seglarick at Mount Hope Cemetery and his crew, and Faithful Lutheran Youth, and many others who we know showed up and worked and we maybe didn't identify who they were. The plans are to do it again next year, be working with John and Ann to see how we can improve and expand the project. The community really did come forward and I think we'd all agree, Lakeside, Allied Veterans and Mount Hope have never looked better. If you've been up there in the last week or prior to Memorial Day weekend, it was just astounding, the job again, I think in most cases, the city did, and the city crews took on the majority of the cleanup after the volunteers got it started, so. Great project, thanks to everybody that was involved, we'll do it again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for all of your hard work because you did spearhead this, but it was very heartwarming to see all of the volunteers up there, so thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thanks for your leadership too, Mayor.
Yep, okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council? They can come forward and give their name and you have four minutes.
Mayor Rep., city council members, Mr. Brown, Ms. Childs, all citizens of our community. You know, there's a number of reasons I could stand here tonight and criticize the council and, but I'm not here for that tonight, I know you probably think I am, but instead I'm here for the, I'm the chairman of the great old Port Huron area Wounded Royals project, and with Memorial Day just behind us, I'd like to announce and also seek your support for the, our full Run Wackle Crow campaign. I plan on this being on Veterans Day, which is November 11th, I know, we all know, approximately six months from now, and stulting at the memorial right across the Lakeside Beach, the Allied Veterans Monument, and gonna Run Wackle Crow through the city of Port Huron, down by the Disabled American Veterans Headquarters, by both beaches too, I'd like to do, down by the American Legion and then back to Pine Grove Park, well, it would end there. My, my main goal and mission here is just to create awareness of some of our veterans that I think sometimes get left behind. So anyways, I seek your support on that, and I'd also like to announce or remind you guys about, out on the river on the 9th and 10th of June, they're gonna have the Vietnam Memorial War, the Miniature War, but the Moving War will be there the 9th and 10th in June. If you ain't never seen it, it's pretty moving. I would hope you guys come out and see it, and I hope you'll support the Wounded Royals project, and thank you very much for your time.
Welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council? If you come forward, you give your name and you have four minutes. Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Under the consent agenda, there were several resolutions authorized in the submission of the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, known as CAPR, for program year April 1, 2011 through March 31st, 2012, regarding the use of community development block grant and home funds to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for their review and approval, reappointing Steve Gurney landlord and Peggy Millam tenant to the Rental Housing Board of Appeals, terms to expire June 10th, 2015, scheduled a public hearing for June 11th, 2012, to hear comments on following code cases, 738 Bancroft Street, 2635 10th Avenue, and 1201 Mini Street, certifying delegates to serve at the 2012 Municipal Employees' Retirement System of Michigan Annual Meeting, and approving the disposition of vacant parcels of city-owned land. And then we will move to, from the city manager, number one.
Is a recommendation that the bid of chimney cricket in the amount of $11,740 for brick repairs at the wastewater treatment plant be accepted?
You wanted to say Jiminy, didn't you?
I did.
(laughing). Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember.
Just like to ask what's being repaired? Obviously the walls. (laughing).
Mayor Rep. and council members, if you wouldn't mind, behind you is pictures of what we would like to repair. This is a public area adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, and it are, these are the steps that the public uses when they're on the walkway in front of the, of the plant to go up to the upper level. And the bricks in this area are failing, if you could go to the next slide, please. And as you can see, they're actually being displaced, and the concern is more than just the unsightliness, if you go to the next one, please. This is actually beginning to tilt out, and we're concerned that eventually if we don't make repairs, the freeze saw cycles will result in this wall falling unexpectedly. So we would like to request approval. You could see from this picture just how far that's been displaced by the, by freeze saw cycles. We have $14,000 we've asked for in this year's budget for doing brick repairs around the plant, and we think this is a good candidate since there's so much public access to this area.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Clay? Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. From the manager, number two.
Is a recommendation that the request of Jeffrey Young to remove the sidewalk along the west side of his property at 1532 Lion Street be approved at no expense to the city.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Moller, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolutions, number one.
Is adopting the capital improvement program for the 2012, 2013 through 2017, 2018 fiscal years.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
(coughing)
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolution number two.
Is approving the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Marysville to join some operations of the Port Huron Fire Department and the Marysville Fire Department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Having looked at this and talking to some other people, and especially the firefighters, and I know how this has been going on, it's quite a controversy issue, but basically because of the amount that affects the budget, I guess my big problem is, is I, or Part B is of contention in this agreement, and I'd like to see Part B reduced to language. Part B is pensions, benefits, and this type of thing. My understanding is they haven't reduced this to a document form, and their benefits, their retirement, and everything is in jeopardy.
Is that something that council could address?
Could you be a little more specific?
Well, talking with some of the firefighters, and their big contention is they've met several times with council and among their groups and with the administration, and Part B has not been reduced to a document that would support one position or other. Are we gonna have Marysville benefits or are we gonna have city of Port Huron benefits? Are we gonna have Marysville pension or are we gonna have city of Port Huron pension?
Yeah, I believe that has all been taken care of in the agreement, and everybody is basically keeping their own pay and own benefits, so that doesn't change at all under this agreement. This is a intergovernmental agreement, this is an agreement, there's, there's about six statutes that give municipalities the ability to combine in a variety of different ways with other municipalities to basically try to save money for services. This is a fairly benign one, if you will, it is a intergovernmental agreement where you're not having an actual combination of the two, you're having an agreement to operate certain functions together. So none of the other things such as, you know, pay, benefits, none of that is changed or impacted by this intergovernmental agreement.
My last question would be the, the fact that if this, if for some reason it doesn't work, is it the administration who has the right to, to end the agreement within the term addressed, or, or could the parties themselves, which I'm talking about the Marysville bargaining employees and the Port Huron bargaining employees, who has the right to cease the contract with the agreement?
That would be either city council. As a general rule, if you look at paragraph seven on page two, the very last sentence says either party by action of their respective city council may terminate the agreement on 60 days written notice to the other party. And there are other ways that are set forth in the agreement where if the parties are unable to agree on certain things, they have a dispute and they can't agree, then the agreement terminates at certain levels of that disagreement. So as a main, the main person, the main entity with the ability to terminate this is city council, and you don't have to have a reason to do it, you just have to give 60 days notice. If it's not working for whatever reason, you can always get out of it on 60 days notice.
Well, I honestly would like to revisit this any year. If we go with the, the agreement tonight, I'd like to revisit it any year to see financially how it works out for the city of Port Huron, how it works out for the city of Marysville. Being that, I probably would, would give it a year to find out what's gonna happen. I mean, I know I'll have full contact with all the parties too, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else on council that has questions for Mr. Shoudi while he's up there?
Ask him a question. If a Marysville firefighter comes into Port Huron and is injured during, and it can go either way, I guess, if it's Port Huron going in there, can we be named in a lawsuit?
You would be subject to a, a workers' comp claim. The primary, the primary entity that would be responsible would be the employer, which would be, in the scenario you identified, would be a Marysville firefighter. There are very narrow exceptions to get around the workers' comp exclusive remedy provision. It would have to be, we would have to have one of our agents do something intentional designed to injure that person with knowledge that injury was certain to occur, I believe is the legal standard.
Okay. I have other comments later, but.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Shoudi while he's up there?
Just a follow-up to Ken, and for clarification, then, it's my understanding that there's some contention about the details that still need to be ironed out. If for any reason we get deadlocked and come to a disagreement as those details are being ironed out, it becomes null and void and this agreement would then be canceled.
Yeah, basically, the part that, the only detail that hasn't been, it isn't before you tonight, is Exhibit A, and Exhibit A was withdrawn at the recommendation of our office. Basically, at the end of 2011, the legislature passed a series of six interconnected acts that were designed to make it clear what your bargaining obligations are to your unions in these circumstances. They made it clear that the decision to enter into an agreement is something that is not subject to bargaining, in fact, the union can't request a bargain over that, and we couldn't enter into negotiations with the union over that decision either by the statute. There is a second area, which are basically the terms of the agreement. The terms of the agreement are what's called a permissive subject to bargaining. That means that there's no requirement that we enter into any negotiations with the unions as to the terms of the agreement, but we can if we so choose. And then the third area, which is why Exhibit A was, was withdrawn, the statutes specifically provide that we have an obligation to bargain with the union if they request to do so over the effects or the impact of the agreement. And so the union's position is Exhibit A might be part of those discussions, so they've asked us to withdraw it. I think there's some serious questions as to whether or not anything on Exhibit A would be implicated in any way by the agreement, since we're basically, we have, the bargaining units are exactly the same as they are today, as they will be on July first. However, out of abundance of caution, we're recommending that we go ahead and pull that back and have a chance to sit down and have the union be given an opportunity to have their say and discuss the issue of what the effects will be on the bargaining unit with this agreement. So we've asked that that be pulled back, and my hope would be that we would be back before you, either at the next city council meeting or the one after that, to get that Exhibit A finalized.
Yes, Councilmember?
So technically, this wouldn't be in effect till it would be Exhibit A or Exhibit B is passed, the next time, I'm not sure which one is the next time that you want to bring back to us, but.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the effective date, our target would be July first.
So technically, we wouldn't have a balanced budget, then, if this isn't passed until July first?
If this isn't passed, then obviously adjustments would have to be.
If you still haven't got the whole plan in place and it's not in place, we wouldn't technically have a balanced budget, then, would we?
You would have a budget, but then you would have to make changes elsewhere if you change some of the assumptions in that budget through, between now and the end of, the end of June.
Okay.
So at this point, I don't see any reason to wait. In fact, making this a final, you know, having a final approval of this agreement enables the parties to know exactly what they're bargaining over, what the impact or effects are. So you'd want this approved, and then go ahead and finalize the negotiations or the bargaining, if you will, over the impact. And is Exhibit A implicated by that, those bargaining? Probably not, but I think it makes sense to just wait and go through that process. I mean, you may get where you want to be anyway.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
I guess I just have a question along Councilmember Lewandowski's concerns. So what's so imperative that we pass this tonight? Why can't we pass it? I mean, if I was having work done on my house, I wouldn't pass this and waiting for the rest of the contract to be settled, so, I mean, am I missing something, or?
Yeah, I mean, basically, you have, you know, the terms of the agreement are not subject to the bargaining process, and the decision to enter into this agreement is not subject to the bargaining process. What we're talking about here is just holding off on Exhibit A, and I don't know if you know what Exhibit A is, but Exhibit A is an organizational chart. Okay? The organizational chart, if you look at the left-hand side where it says Port Huron Fire Department, that's the way it exists today, with the one exception is that at the very top, you have a fire chief on both sides. So nothing has changed. We're, we've asked that this be pulled until we go through that process. So, you know, the decision is yours. I think it makes sense to move forward at this time, given this organizational chart. If you look at the very bottom, it says the above organizational structure is subject to change in the future at the discretion of both sides. So is this a material term? Certainly debatable.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Shoudi? Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Lewandowski.
I support, you know, a concept of a fire merger. I don't think you'll find too many people that don't. But what I don't support is not having a plan of how this thing is going to work in place. It just baffles my mind that we would get into something like this, because, while you can do it with the recreation department and you can go along as, as things come up, I don't think you can do that in the fire department, because people's lives are on mine. I also don't see the savings. I know a lot of it is being based on two, or two retirements, which I think most people know is not going to happen. So technically, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be laying off two people from the fire department to make up for the savings, which it won't either, because they're going to be lower-paid people on the, on the doles there. And I know with people, some, it's been said that we should just go ahead and do it because it's easy to get out of. I don't believe that's the right way to go about things, is to go into them because they're easy to get out of. It tends to be more expensive when you don't do them right the first time, and I think it's just a backwards way of going about that. And also, my last concern is along with the savings, is I think that in the Port Huron Police, or Fire Department, you're going to have to promote somebody up. You're not going to have that day-to-day person in there to, as the captain in the police department would be, to take care of some of the small issues when Koenig or Koenig, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, when he's not there. You're going to have to have somebody there to take on those things, and again, that eats into the savings. So I think with having, being a layoff, I think we need to call it what it is instead of, we know, I know nobody's put in their retirement papers yet, so it's going to be a layoff. And then my second concern is, is I believe we have a trainer on our staff and make sure everybody's certification is in place, and if, is that person going to be spending time in Marysville training their staff to get them up to the same training certification we are, and are we going to be paying for that? That's about what I have.
Mayor Rep?
I wondered if any of those were points that could be answered, or as far as the trainer part, is there, or is that still part of that same Exhibit A?
Mayor and council, the question regarding layoffs, this, this plan is designed, included two positions, one position that has already taken place through retirement, and then the chief's position that will take effect this week. So there won't, there's no plan to do layoffs at this time. As far as the training, we, we have a training coordinator, division chief, and he, he trains our staff, and he also trains other agencies that, that work with us. So this really isn't a significant change or an additional cost. Part of the, part of the concern as it relates to how we operate, we, we operate, and we've had an extended long-term mutual aid agreement with Marysville, we operate well together now. The, having one administrator will certainly give an opportunity to look for the economies of scale in terms of operations and how we could continue to save dollars in the future. There are some unknowns, because one administrator is going to be challenged with working between two departments, but we're seeing this more across the state. Lansing and East Lansing recently did it. There's some other communities down around Detroit that are looking at it. It's a way to reduce some of that top cost and keep, keep the staff in the streets where they're really needed for response. So I'm not sure if there's any other questions, but.
Well, my assumption, again, would be that if a new fire chief is coming in, he's going to get a pay raise, and do we have, that'd be another question, I guess, is do we have any say if Chief Koenig gets a pay raise every year? If he's the only department head, it's going to be some tensions in there, too.
The design, the design is that Chief Koenig becomes, he becomes the chief for both cities in this plan. He also will work for both city managers. So both city managers would have to come to an agreement whether or not he got a pay raise or not, just like the city manager agrees with himself now whether or not the department head would get a pay raise. So there has to be a collaborative discussion there, whether they believe he would be in line for pay raises. If one doesn't agree, then they have to, they'll have to sort that out, but it's, it wouldn't be up to Marysville alone to give him a pay raise. There has to be, certainly, there has to be a discussion with, with our side on that.
My assumption would be if he's taking over the department that's three times the size of the department he currently runs, he's probably going to see a pay raise. I would, I would expect that he would see a pay raise, but, and then I guess other parts of my assumptions, too, is some of your salary is, is recreation, and some is parks, I believe, is, or is it, exactly? That cost is going back to there, so I think some of that savings that's being used into that number two, you know, we still got to pay seventy-five percent of whatever Koenig's salary is. I think that's going to eat away at some of the savings that were expected.
Well, I think when you look at, and possibly, Mr. Ogden could explain this better than I do, but I, I look at it as two budgets coming together, a seventy-five and a twenty-five to form a hundred percent joint operating budget. So as they, as we operate in full budget, and that's how it will be with these reductions built in, you're going to see expenses typically the way they are today, less the positions. And so that's where the savings will be, will be realized. The, the idea of us paying directly to, to Marysville seventy-five percent of his salary is, his salary is going to pay, be paid for out of the Marysville general fund like it is today. At the end of that, there'll be a reconciliation period, I believe it's, they're going to look at the numbers quarterly to determine whether or not one is getting out of the line or not, and then where they would be at, at each quarter, and make the necessary adjustments. Then at the end of the year, following the audit, they realize the total actual number of what it costs to operate both, both departments, and any necessary adjustments would be made at that time. So there's no way to hide cost, because in the audit process, those costs are going to come out. There's no way to, even if, even if they were to budget low, thinking they're going to save going forward, their actual costs are going to be their actual cost, as determined by the auditors.
And I understand, and I think you bring up another point there, is that if, say, we do underbudget, we do only spend, I know we're allocated seventy-five percent, and if we only spend seventy percent of it, we have to pay that five percent back over to Marysville. And I know that's a number that's probably going to be high from, you know, the response I got from, I wrote the email for that, but it's, I, I just, I'm not comfortable with that either. And I would rather, and I like the idea, I'd just rather see, have everything in place and we know how it's going to work before we jump into something like this, and that's just my opinion, but I said, I would like to have it done, and it's, it gets more expensive to do something right the second time.
At this, at this point, and when we looked at this from, from day one, we, we started with a much more grand plan. We thought it would be easy to do just more of a complete organizational merge. We found out after we got into it, there were a lot of unanswered questions. We talked about, do you close fire stations? Do you not close fire stations? And we backed away from those, because we realized, after we studied this, that there were some concerns about response times that we really couldn't, we really couldn't measure until we had real experience. And that's where, where it came back to saying, let's leave all the stations open, let's leave, leave the staff where they currently are, and as we get into the process, then we could study and determine if it makes sense to move somebody from this spot to that spot. And as Mr. Shoudi alluded, that's when it would be necessary to sit down with the bargaining unit and say, this is what we're thinking of doing, and we would go through that process. But that's, that's why we really can't bargain the unknown, and the idea is to get the agreement in place, and then look at those issues that, that will reveal themselves as we go forward. And we do that now, day-to-day. There's things that I may do as chief that the union, the union doesn't, doesn't like. They may protest that, and they have a right to protest that under the labor law, and we sit down and we talk about it. I don't usually get away with very much, because they, they keep an eye on it, and I'm sure, and I'm sure they'll do the same thing here. Sometimes you do things and you don't realize that maybe you're crossing that line, and that, that just happens, but in this, the same, the same thing will happen here, and we met, we met with the attorneys and the unions, I think it was last week, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. They came up with, with several issues they were concerned about, and they discussed a level of understanding, and Mr. Fletcher and their attorney were, were working on, you know, discussing that in the future. But there was, there was no alarming issue that came out of those discussions that should, would say, or was obvious that this, this wouldn't work going forward.
I agree with you on that. I think it will work going forward at some point in time, it's just, I guess I'm just the opinion that we need to have all our ducks in a row before this is passed. We don't have the organizational chart in place, and I just don't understand how you can go about doing that without even having a simple thing as such as, we've been working on it for a year, what's, you know, what's a couple more months to?
Again, to echo Mr. Shoudi's comments, we didn't, we didn't adjust the organizational chart. It's exactly as it exists today with the, with the inclusion of, or the exclusion of one chief, and the, and just moving him over to the center of that chart. Marysville's org chart looks the same as it, it will June thirty versus July one, and ours also does, in Port Huron. So there's not, there's not going to be a dramatic shift, because, again, our plan is to keep the firehouses operating. There's no, no, no recommendation to do anything differently, and that the service, the service on the street is still going to be as close as we can do it today. I mean, that's, that's going to be all of our challenges going forward with reduced revenue and increased cost, and this is a way to really try to, try to just save some dollars.
And I appreciate that you guys are trying, and I think you're, you're doing a great job at looking at ways to save us money, but it, it's just a matter, you said we don't have it, it's an unknown. I think it's something you could figure out if we sat down with everybody and, and got everybody on board before we agreed with this plan, and that's, and again, it's just my opinion.
I think from the bar, and I, I can't speak for the bargaining unit, and I'm not going to, but their, their day-to-day work is not going to change. I mean, they're not going to see, their shift's going to be like it is, their equipment's going to be like it is, their day is not going to change. And that's, those conditions of, of their employment, and their wages, their benefits, their health care, all those things are going to remain just as they are today, as this goes forward. Like anything, that's always subject to negotiations, just like any contract, but on July first, there's no, no plan to change those things.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Moeller?
Oh, what was your question? More questions for him? Was that what you were asking?
No, I just said any more discussion.
Okay.
You can sit down.
I just want to say I agree with Councilmember Lewandowski. I believe that we need to have our eggs in order. Also, the administration lost a little bit of my confidence when they went into this by saying they were saving money by appointing an interim chief that doesn't work here. To me, it was a slap in the face to the three battalion chiefs out there. Any one of them could have stepped forward, or God forbid that they're incompetent, and they're out there at night, and while the chief's sleeping, but should have been able to step into, let me say right off, though, Mark White is a personal friend of mine. I like Mark White, but I don't believe that we're saving any money by appointing an interim chief, when we could have just temporarily moved somebody up and gave him a fifteen-thousand-dollar raise, instead of paying whatever we're going to give Mr. White. I know fifteen thousand's a little far, because we were only talking about a month, two months, three months, six months, whatever, but if we want to save money, I think it would be better just to temporarily make the interim chief one of our battalion chiefs than to appoint a brand-new chief and pay them. So you lost, I lost some confidence there, but basically, I just want to say that I, I agree with everything Councilmember Lewandowski said, and so I won't be supporting this as it is today.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Protam Archibald.
I guess I'll throw mine in there. I did have an opportunity to speak to some of the, the fire department as well as administration. Have kind of went back and forth on this, but at this point, I, I think it's very important that we, we pay very close attention to the details as we move forward, but I kind of see this a little different. I see it as us taking a step forward in order to take step two. And so for me, I really think that sometimes you need to take that next step in order to even discover the unknowns, in order to address those and finalize those, and figure out where do we go next. And I, and I think if we take those steps with all the details that we need and take them very small steps, very cautiously, and we do it a step at a time, we can get that first step finalized and done and solved before we go to step two. And so that's kind of how I'm seeing this, is that this is step one, we, we know it's okay, we move forward to step two, and if the details aren't right, then we don't go past that next step until we, we're sure those details are there. I, I don't see this as being an issue. If I don't like the details on step two, I, I won't vote for step two, frankly. So I'm okay with that, and, and just one last thing with Ken's request of revisiting this yearly, I think in the first year, we would be very remiss if we don't look at those estimates and visit this quarterly as they, those come in, not wait a year down the road to decide, yes, it's working and we could move faster, or no, it's not working and we better back off. I would like to make sure that after the first quarter, we take a look, are things progressing as we think? Are we, are there any savings? Are there not? Is it costing us more? What do things look like after that first quarter? And then we could move forward each quarter, and at the end of the year, then we could have a, a full analysis and decide from there. Maybe we look at it yearly after that, Ken.
Mayor Rep? Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
I agree with Councilmember Archibald, same line of thinking. Also, I had the privilege of talking to an old friend at a reunion where he was, served as chief of Southfield for me for a long time, and we had shared probably a good two-and-a-half hour discussion about what Port Huron was about to do and what he had gone through in working with municipalities down there, and laying out what we did. He, of course, agreed this is something that's, that has to be done in terms of financial savings, but he also thought that this was, I guess this goes along with what Sherri's saying, it says a mild version of, of putting these two departments together. Also had the privilege of talking to some of the firefighters, and they were professional in their presentation and their concerns, and a couple of them I dismissed in terms of, in terms of, I thought, workable, and, but I understand their apprehension about the whole, the whole setting. I, I think this is, again, the step forward we need to make, and I think we're going to all have eyes open in terms of reviewing this at a certain time period to see, again, as Sherri put it, step number two, so I'll be supporting it.
I guess I'd like to echo some of the, some of the same things. I, I agree that I would like to hear regular updates on how these savings are coming. I like the idea that Sherri presented of quarterly updates, and I, I also agree with Mr. Harris that we should be looking at this at the end of the year. I understand that there are many concerns going in, but I will support this. I understand that this is, this, this could benefit both cities. I understand that this is something that the state is looking for municipalities to be doing, and so I'm excited about taking this first step, and, you know, we'll continue to keep an eye on the details as those come forward, and I'm confident that if an issue arises, we can, we can address it.
Thank you. Did you want to say something, Councilmember?
Yes, finally. Mr. Lewandowski brought up some good points. I, I thought I was going in the right direction, I still think I am, but I think Mr. Lewandowski is also going in the right direction. I think if we have another month, I think we have to use that other month and get something that everybody can agree on.
I thought I was going in the right direction, I still think I am, but I think Mr. Lewandowski is also going in the right direction. I think if we have another month, I think we have to use that other month and get something that everybody can agree on. I think we have to evaluate this process all along, and I think we have to make that decision of what we're going to do in this month before we decide going forward this. Like Mr. Lewandowski says, that we got a lot of unanswered questions. Some of them are small, some of them are big, but we have to look at both angles, and it's going to be a tough decision. Thank you.
Well, I guess it leaves me, and as Mayor Protam Archibald said, you know, she's equated it to step one and step two, but I think sometimes you have to make a step to confirm that you're going on, and then you can do the details that need to be done. And certainly, there's a lot of apprehension, I'm sure, as far as the firefighters are concerned as to what's going to happen. But I think in the long run, this is, you know, going to solidify their jobs, and no one has said it's a guarantee savings, it's just a projected savings, but it is the way things are going. It is what we need to do, is to do business differently. I mean, the times have changed, the economies have changed, so I do look at it this the same way, that this is just a step that we're taking toward the end results, so I'm sure we'll hear back and have the next part of that, and then you can start having talks with the unions and figuring out the rest of it. So I do support it all. So is there any other discussion before we vote?
Mayor Rep. I guess my big concern is that we start doing these, and we go into these things, and we pull out of them in six months, because things aren't working out, that we're going to have a less chance to work with other communities in the future, because they're going to be less apprehensive, or going to be less wanting to work with us, because they're going to say, well, they don't want to get all their details in a row, and I think that's going to cost us in the long run, but so be it.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Mohler.
I would just, to piggyback off of Councilmember Lewandowski just said, not only, if it doesn't work, not only are we going to have problems trying to get other communities to go with, as Chief Icke so eloquently stated, is how well the unions have worked with this. If the other unions see that this isn't working, don't expect them to be as cooperative in the future if this doesn't go right.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Councilmember Mohler.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Yes. I believe that did pass. We'll move on to resolution number three.
Is adopting the budget, including the downtown development authority budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and authorizing the levy of the tax mileage rates.
Do we have a motion? Come on. Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. Is there discussion? We'll take the... Yeah, Councilmember Harris.
Yes, I already discussed this, and I don't know, nobody else wants to speak up, but, you know, I looked at a number of things, and I think the first thing that brought to my attention was last week when the city manager, Mr. Brown, was on Paul Miller's show. You know, this budget process, my first time to go through a budget process, but there's a lot of things that have happened that are kind of disagreeable with the agreeable part, less agreeable. Mr. Brown made a nice comment that he thought the process, he didn't say flawed, but I interpreted, he mentioned the process was flawed, and the fact is that we started too late with these budgets, and there's a lot more things that can be considered. And he speaks of revival next year in which we start doing things sooner, and I think that's where we failed the public at this time, you know? We did a lot of things. We raised water and sewer rates, we doubled them. Yet the rate of inflation is 3%, and we raised them by 6.5%. And then when I look at, you know, we have some departments that did a good job, they give some back, then we have other departments that are going to spend $2.9 million. I think that when we do this, we've got to look at everything, and I like to say, I know people are going to say, what in the hell are you talking about, when I recommended Bruce in his comments, but I think he hit the nail on the head, and I wish we'd have started a lot earlier.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I just wanted to say that I do agree with you in the respect that I think now that this budget, when it is behind us, it's not a matter of you can't anticipate what the dollar amount is necessarily for the next year, but let's face it, it's going to be less. As history's telling us, we're getting less and less money. So certainly, it's not, when you're thinking that, you have to be thinking about what ways you're going to do with less, and you can't wait until two months before to figure that out. So that is a year-long process, unless you think, unless there's something that's going to come down the road that we think we're going to get more money, but I doubt that very much. So it certainly is the time to start thinking about what other changes could be made in order to have savings next year. So I do agree. Is there no discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Councilmember Mohler.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, the budget does pass. That concludes our regular agenda. I do have a couple things. I was talking with the city manager about the garden clubs and the different things that they've done around town. Jim Ralcon came here earlier and talked about the volunteerism that occurred in the cemetery, and so I had him put together a list, so we hopefully did not forget anybody, but I think it's just remarkable that we have all these volunteers in our community, and I don't know if anybody noticed them out there, but it was about a week ago Saturday, there was literally dozens of people, probably hundreds of people, in different areas out planting and making our city look beautiful, so I'd like to give them credit. And if I forget anybody, I apologize, but beautification commission, McMoran Boulevard Islands, Pine Grove Islands, Peace Garden, Lincoln Park Garden, Pine Grove Park, Arch, and Edison Parkway and Edison Drive. The River Park neighbors did Boynton Point, Blue Water Garden Club, Beds Along, Pine Grove Avenue, and Moore Memorial at Pine Grove Park. The Port Huron Garden Club, Flag Plaza, Edison Depot, River Street Marina Museum, Memorial Garden, and Sambor Park. The AT&amp;T Communication Workers of America have done some. St. Clair County Master Gardeners did Vantage Point, St. Clair County District Court Community Service Crew, and of course, our own City of Port Huron Parks Department. And it certainly does help beautify our city, so to all of those volunteers, thank you. And also, we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge Chief Icke's retirement, and I understand this is your last week of work after how many years? Thirty-three and a half. Well, congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. Is there anything else to come before the council?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Mohler.
I'd like to thank the veterans for the fine parade and the service they had yesterday, and for the honor they gave me of speaking there. And unlike NBC, all the veterans are heroes in my mind, no matter what the news media thinks.
Councilmember Harris.
I would just like to compliment Nancy Windsor and her program that was identified in the paper this summer, of creating this new idea with a recreation program, like getting her youth off the street, taking them to ballparks and things like that. I know years ago, they used to have the little groups that would come around to the schools and stuff, and eventually, they failed because of participation. I think she set a higher example to get these kids involved and keep them involved, and I think that's a plus for us.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Mohler.
I would ask, if at all possible, I noticed the council didn't give an award this year for the Heroes Award. I would ask that they read the Mike Connell article and maybe consider Art Collins. Art Collins has been a resident of this city. I grew up a block from him, grew up with his son and that, never knew that he was a Korean War hero, and real heroes don't brag, and I think it would be nice, on behalf of the city, he's 80 years old, if we would honor him as Hero of the Year. So I would just ask that that committee maybe reconvene and suggest that.
Thank you. Anything else from council?